I don't know what.
So that actually, like that's all like, because that capture, we only did like, I pulled the shadow out of the camera. But like, the actual, like, yeah, was actually what I was seeing.
All right, six o'clock, everyone stand, we will call this special call meeting, city council to order. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you, I will ask that councilwoman, Ms. Sampson, who is in the pledge.
Pledge early, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening to all of you, and welcome to the special call city council meeting for Georgetown. On today's date is May the 28th, 2025. At this time, we'll have roll call.
Mrs. Wilkins, here.
Mr. Crisp.
Here.
Mrs. Hamburg.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. Minkie.
Present.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell. Mrs. Tingle Sames.
Here.
Mr. Stumpf.
Here.
Thank you, at this time, I would like to have a motion to, for the minutes. Motion made by Mr. Hampton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Brandt, are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise, say no. Let the record reflect that it passed. At item four, receipt of the check registry, council, if you have received those, please raise your hand. Let the record reflect that all has received. We don't have anyone for public comments. Then we'll move right on to the mayor's comment, got a few comments to make here. First of all, for, to give you some updates, for Councilman Chris at his last meeting for us to look at the information regarding the occupational licensing fee credit, crediting provision and in a local agreements. I have assigned a staff to do that, and we are working on that, and we will give you update on that at that time. Also, Councilman Stone requests that to look at a possibility of setting aside some acreage for new development, and I've assigned staff to do that, and we are working on that, and we'll do that also. Also, a kind of an update on the development impact fee stakeholders meeting, which will be June the 5th, 2025, at three o'clock, at the fiscal court, third floor up here, and so more information will come from there. Also, information about Georgetown Sister City International Travel, council, you should get some information about a invitation. Remember, it's on your own dime, okay, so we would not use public money to send you abroad, so, but you're welcome to do so, and we're going to give you some information as to the costs and also the deposit deadline. So that will be coming at you soon. A reminder that the fire station training center ribbon cutting ceremony will be June the 30th, at four o'clock, at the training center. So you want to be there for that, and we'll come with that. Also, want to give you a little bit of update, when, I think, Councilman Hampton, I think you asked this question about possibly looking at the, at, for the signage, for the county, and also looking at possibility for tourism. Had a little bit of meeting today with them, and we're working on some type of information on that, and so stay tuned with that, we'll get that to you at this particular time. All right, next, item 6A, the executive order for the Georgetown Business Park Authority. As you all know, they were not able to do anything, and we had to, my job was to recommend three individuals. I had an opportunity to talk with those individuals, and I'm bringing to this council three, Katie Prather, Josh Lang, Landacre, and John Trailer are the three. At this time, I would entertain a motion to accept those three to be a pointers board, yes?
Certainly.
Motion made by Mr. Minkie, do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hamburg, are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Let the record reflect that it passed. Informational technology update, Councilman Stone asked that, you know, to be able to have the tech liaison to come, and along with the support staff to actually give kind of what they do. So I thought with the budget process going on, and some of the different new developments we have done with infrastructure for our, for our, you know, internet and all that, I thought would be a good time for her to come and show what some of the things that she was doing. And also, she's got with her net game here with her to support, and I'm going to turn it over to them, and so I'll let Sarah come up, Sarah James.
Mayor, council, good evening.
Good evening.
We are here today to present an overview of the IT liaison position. We will discuss website and social media management, project management, introduce the members, the team members of our net games technologies, and hear an overview of their process, their progress. The IT liaison is a crucial support staff member to the mayor's office and various departments in the city of Georgetown. Reporting directly to the chief administrative officer, the IT liaison participates in weekly status meetings, and supports department directors and their end users as requested or directed. The IT liaison maintains regular communication with IT related service providers. Additionally, the IT liaison disseminates information to the public by publishing updates on the city's website and social media platforms as they are approved. One of the key responsibilities assigned by the mayor is social media management, aimed at enhancing the city's social media presence. Currently, the city of Georgetown operates a Facebook account and a YouTube channel. With a more strategic approach, we have observed a significant improvements in our Facebook engagement metrics. Our Facebook account has achieved 1,400% increase in its ability to reach users, with interactions rising by 3,700%, and link clicks increasing by 1,400%. Additionally, the number of page followers has grown by 5.2%, and page visits has surged by 3,000, excuse me, 3,200%. The city continues to utilize a YouTube stream to share in public meetings. The videos are maintained on our channel and can be reviewed by the public at any time. As of April 30th, 2025, we have 553 subscribers. Over the last year, our channel was viewed 7,181 times, with viewers watching an average of 15 minutes and 16 seconds during live streams. Website management is another responsibility assigned by the mayor. The IT liaison is responsible for publishing content to the website as the administration approves it. In October of 2024, the city launched a redesign of its website, providing citizens with a modern platform that offers improved functionality and accessibility. This redesign is a critical first step towards achieving website accessibility compliance. A ruling published by the federal registrar on April 24th, 2024, mandates that any municipal government with a population of less than 50,000 residents must meet all requirements set forth by Title II of the American Disabilities Act by April 26th of 2027. The mayor has proposed two additional accessibility tools in the upcoming budget to ensure that the city is on track to comply with this ruling on that given date. In addition to managing the website and social media, the IT liaison serves as a primary or secondary point of contact for various IT service providers, including internet service providers, phone system providers, managed services that relate to security, software support, and website services. Another duty that arises from the primary contact role in project management or project leadership. The IT liaison is tasked with leading several key projects, including an inherited infrastructure implementation with one of our internet service providers and our primary managed service provider. The critical, a critical infrastructure move involving a primary MSP, a phone provider, an internet service provider, and software providers. A phone system replacement in collaboration with the phone system provider and primary managed service provider. The website redesign with our website provider. A critical infrastructure replacement with our primary MSP managed service provider and software providers. A secondary critical infrastructure replacement with a primary MSP and software providers. In progress is a citywide tenant migration with two managed service providers. And though this list reflects large scale projects, it does not include smaller projects that cause limited business interruptions or the day-to-day tasks of managing extensive network of the infrastructure of the city of Georgetown. At this time, I'd like to invite our primary managed service provider to present the significant network infrastructure work achieved over the last two years and outline our path forward.
If you all could also introduce yourselves, please, sir.
Sure, I'm going to introduce these guys as well, if that's okay with you guys. First and foremost, you guys confused me a little bit, I didn't know Todd did District 7 also, so. I forgot we were in this chamber versus the other one, so a little bit confusing. But first of all, mayor, thank you, and council members, thank you for allowing us to come in tonight, I greatly appreciate it. Several of you guys I know, just from other dealings with the city, as well as, for me, I have lived in, not Georgetown, I live at the county, and I've lived there for 66 and a half years, so this is near and dear to my heart as far as making sure that the city runs well and everything is done proper. So as a vice president of sales for NetGame for the last 23 years, I have been quasi-attached to the city of Georgetown in terms of making sure that things go well. Over the last three years, four years probably, I've kind of taken it on myself to be frontline and worked more with, of course, the predecessors, and then, of course, the current people we have here tonight. In terms of my tenure, like I said, I've worked for NetGame for 23 years, and NetGame's been around about 40 years. Of those 40, about 20 of them, we have spent in managed services, and it's worked very well for us. We have a lot of managed service clients, you guys are one of those, and it's very important to us to make sure that those client needs and expectations are met, and that we are able to provide those. The great news for you guys, I'll say something else first. Over that period of time, I think about how many help desk calls that we have fielded, because we have been under contract with the city for over nine years. Actually, looked it up this morning, and Mayor Prather signed it on 2/19 of 2016, so it will be going on 10 years as we get to next year. So, over that period of time, I can't imagine how many help desk calls our help desk people, how many times you guys or constituents, or employees of the city have called in. I can't imagine how much proactive work we've done in terms of patching, in terms of trying to resolve an issue before it ever arises. And then the third part of that is how And then the third part of that is how much time we have spent in our house putting together what I consider proposals to move the city forward as you guys have moved forward and you guys have grown. So for that, I thank you, but also it's been painful at times. But in terms of that pain, I look at where we stand today and over the two years that Bernie has been here and I think you guys were re-elected just this year, correct? Yeah. Don't get to vote for the city, sorry. But I look at that and probably one of the best things that happened for NetGain, well for the city first, let's talk about you guys because you're most important. The role that Sarah is in today, I don't know where she went to, but the role she is in today, you guys, your constituents, as well as you should pat yourself on the back because by putting her in play, she holds us accountable. And that's very important to you as a customer of ours and that is very important to us because for me, I run into you guys from time to time and I like knowing what's going on and I like to know that I don't have to tuck around the end cap in Kroger's. You know, we can sit and talk because we're in a good spot. And a lot of that is purely on the shoulders of Sarah and communicating what's going on here at the city, making sure that our guys are aware because a lot of times people reach out directly to your IT liaison. So thank you, Sarah, for all your help, thank you Devon for all your help as well. On the other side of that, it's been a big help to us because the line of communication over the past two years is wide open. It's full throttle, it's like through a fire hose that Robert may bring to the table. But we get feedback from Sarah and it's good feedback that we can either improve on or we did something well, so it's vitally important for us to get that feedback. And having someone that clearly understands technology, not taking anything away from you guys, any of you all, but to have somebody that has that ability to communicate to people to fix the problems, which is not me, the guys behind me do. So it's great to have that. So I thank you all and NetGain thanks you all for implementing that and putting it in place, so thanks again. Finally, I wanted to take a moment and introduce the two gentlemen with me, Gavin Bags, Bags, Gavin Boggs, who is the manager of our rapid response engineering team. Gavin was boots on the ground for us for about two years here and due to his great work, he was promoted within NetGain. And with that is the painful thought of someone has to replace him and being trained and so forth. So Tyler Baumann, who is here tonight, he is now your all's technical lead onsite, a lot of times doing work here at the city throughout the different departments. And so tonight, we wanted to take a minute and go through a few things. I wanted to introduce you a little bit to NetGain and the people that we have here and say thanks for all the things that you guys have done. But most importantly, Gavin is going to spend a minute and talk about the last two years or some of the things that occurred over that period of time. And then finally Tyler is going to spend a few minutes and go over where we're at and what we see coming up for you guys over the next one to three years. Any questions you guys got to make? Great, thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Kim. So, yeah, I was pretty much over the city's account for close to two years. Really, the, the name of the game then is, you know, making sure any implementation that we're implementing is, you know, proactive and long-term. So any underlying causes, anything like that, we're resolving them at the root level. You know, we don't, we don't want repeat issues, we want to fix it the first time and make sure it's the right solution. So during that time, we were able to onboard the police department site fully, so that kind of gave us further ability to manage the city as a whole, so there wasn't isolated issues that affected other sites. So that greatly assisted us in kind of seeing the lay of the land as it really sat to develop a plan to begin to resolve all these underlying causes. So we can, to move on to the next one. Speak about the statistics?
So this is a good example of the workload that's, we've been tackling and you can see, I can't actually see very well, the spike starting in the middle represents implementing several hardware projects and then drops dramatically afterwards. And that's kind of the long-term goal is to get that trend downwards over time. These projects, they all will have a brief spike due to just the amount of work that's needed to do them. And then we expect to see calls, issues, everything trend downwards after that. That's, that's really what we want to see and what we're working towards. And so these, these stats are a good representative, representation of that. We can go to the next slide. So this right here is a breakdown of the different types of tickets that we see. And what's nice about this is the largest one is just a kind of a catch-all for anything from a, a user with problems with their desktop to their phone to just all sorts, that's the, the catch-all for just miscellaneous things. And as you can see, the more, the more significant, operating systems, servers, those are all much, much lower, which is what we want to see. We'd like to get that even down lower, that's, the whole goal is to drive these down over time. So this is a good visualization. And this right here is a good breakdown of where Sarah comes in. So as you can see, the highest ticket count by far is on Sarah's back and she, she fields all these tickets and helps distribute them, get them to the right place, makes, bulldogs them along to make sure that they don't sit. And it's, it's a great, I mean, you could, the, it's significant. And this is over the last 12 months by department. Oh, yeah, okay. So, and that, that's right, so one of these is proactive work versus reactive work. I don't think it's late.
Which is which?
The proac, the one that includes proactive work is the 764 and then the reactive work is 581.
Can you also explain, because I am a computer illiterate, everybody else around here knows that, but you all don't know that yet, but on this, how, how does the process work? How does, do, do the department heads go to her and say there's a problem and then she brings it to you all? How, how, what's the, what's the steps to get to that?
So it's a, it's a bit of a mixture. Any user, you know, within any city, city wad, you know, can call into the help desk or submit a ticket on their behalf. Sarah's the primary contact for, say, the proactive efforts, so that it has to be assigned to a primary contact, so whether that be scheduling, like for example, like the 911 reboots that have to recur to, to keep functionality there, there has to be a primary contact so we can reach out and gain approval. So that kind of is how the proactive side works. The reactive is she can submit a ticket on anyone's behalf, say you had a meeting or something, hey, my PC's running slow, I need to, can you get someone to help me out? She certainly can do that, but all the other users have the ability as well. And as you can see, certain department, department heads kind of do, pull a little bit of the load for the user count at their locations, so.
So give me, you said that one, give me another example of what would create a ticket count that she would, she would have to do to create that ticket count?
So say, we had, we needed to replace, say, 10 workstations, right? Your computer's running slow, you want to replace it. Sarah would be the, the contact that we would kind of facilitate all the scheduling work. She wants to, you know, she's going to be out of the office this day, let's go ahead and, you know, get everything switched so you can just get back in and get back to work, there's no interruption to your day-to-day. That's kind of an example on that. And then some users kind of like being in control themselves, like I manage my schedule, you know, I, I can do that. So that's whenever, for example, you would be the primary contact for that ticket. And then historically, you know, we can pull it by any, any user.
So before, then it was just done strictly done with the department person or the employee contacting you all?
Roughly, yeah. So this is kind of a more streamlined approach, it's a little bit less of headache for us, so we can always get a response, you know, no one likes their issue going unresolved and it gets closed, that's frustration for everybody. So this is kind of making sure we're, we're closing all, all loose ends and making sure your issue gets resolved on, on the first ticket.
Okay, were you all doing the website before?
Uh, no, we don't have anything to do with that.
That was offset some, some, okay.
So we're, we're more of like the infrastructure internally, so not really much to do with the website.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions about that?
Did that answer your question?
More or less, uh-huh.
Is there a part that we're missing?
No, it's a part I'm missing. It's a part I'm missing, I just have to understand it a little bit more, so I have to dwell on it and then I'll have more questions.
Well, I think you brought up a good point there, but we do, you guys, Kim.
Come on up here, thank you.
Oh, wear me out. Yeah, I think the vital part that I didn't even mention, I said we worked help desk tickets, well, we have an internal group as well, and I don't know if you mentioned that or not, but we have people that are on your team internally, three or four people that, not just the city of Georgetown, but a separate group, and if it gets overwhelming, we'll split it off a little bit more, but basically, you pick up the phone and call in, you would get your help desk team. And then if that ticket can be resolved, we try to resolve it on first call or when you send an email in or create a ticket, as I mentioned. If not, then we may have to roll a truck and that truck looks very similar to Tyler, okay? And if he's off, there's someone else, but typically that's how it works. Now does that better explain it?
Sort of.
But from a technical standpoint, that's what these guys do, they sit on the help desk all day, not these guys, but there's guys that sit on the help desk all day for you guys to utilize when it comes to Tyler.
So Kim, I would ask if you would sit closer, just in case, we got to call you back up again, because I'm sure there will be some questions that you have to answer.
Due to my age, sit closer?
Yeah, sit closer, I don't want you to, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, so collaboration, this kind of builds on the foundation that I spoke of about before, you know, having a point of contact within the city is crucial for us, right? If, if we don't have a point of contact, you know, it's, it's really hard to develop a concrete plan that, that best suits the city. So along with us having this point of contact, we can go ahead and create, you know, recurring weekly meetings, you know, with the IT liaison that helps us adhere to those proactive efforts. So we're identifying problems, you know, before they occur. Any existing common or, you know, any of you had many complaints about a department, maybe we'd look into it, get a, kind of develop a plan of action and then, you know, find the cause or find the root cause of the issue and then fix it. So we're not just putting a Band-Aid on anything, we're going to solve things, you know, the right way the first time, so that's just less frustration for everybody and in turn that leads to more, you know, employee productivity. So, yeah, keeping the momentum. Basically, we developed a one, three, five-year plan that we kind of adhere to, to keep the city aligned in, you know, any upcoming compliance needs, you know, any critical replacements like Sarah had mentioned. Basically, we identify the urgent items within the one year that we need to do, we plan for the three-year, so any semi-urgent, maybe it's, it could be budget-related, something you know, a little bit more costly, and then five-year just to make sure, you know, everything that we planned is still the right solution for the city. Because at the end of the day, that's what we want, right? We're, we're a partnership, we want exactly what you guys want and that's just a healthy staple network. So that's why we meet weekly. We have many department members, so we have myself, Tyler, his team, a couple of the client success, Kim, all different parts, all different groups in NetGain that all, you know, work closely to ensure we're meeting the needs of all the users, you know, all the department heads, any, any other important aspects that we need to meet, so we're all on the same page. So the, the approach has been really beneficial for the city. As you can see, product, or employee productivity has, has drastically rose, we're having much lower ticket counts, so people are calling less often about recurring issues, when they call them, it's more one-offs and, and not anything we really need to investigate and dedicate a lot of resources to. So that's, that's really all this is about, you know, we have a plan, we're proud of our progress and we're going to keep doing what we're doing to, to best support you guys. So is there any, any questions about this or any of other slots Tyler and I or Kim can answer?
Mr. Minky?
So, do you all manage all of the hardware and software that the system's using or only the hardware?
So we, we physically manage the hardware for the most part. There, there's one-offs, like for vendor-owned equipment such as the spectrum leases and stuff, but we do assist in any, in any capacity needed. So whether that be like network changes, it's, it's more of a hand-in-hand approach with any vendors. It's the same thing with software, you know, well, i-if we don't support the software itself, we'll open the ticket with the vendor and work on their behalf for you, so you don't have to, you know, spend three or four hours on the phone, you know, arguing with the, the vendor when we can do that for you. So that's kind of the partnership there.
Okay. Do you know how many software package, unique software systems we have?
Quite a few.
Quite a few, yeah. The, the critical ones such as like, you know, the CAD software that functions out of the 911 and PD, there's, those are really the, the more common ones. I, I only know the critical ones often off have like the CAD software and then like NetMotion for the, the mobile police officers. Then I think there's a couple HR software that we've been talking, and then VIP analytics, but other than that, it's more kind of like a best effort, you know, you call in, we're going to do our best to assist you, even if we don't know about the platform, because it, it may be fully vendor-supported, but we'll get the information you need and help you as you need it.
So Sarah, can we get a list of all the unique software systems that?
I'm sorry, I'm here you.
Can we, can I get a list of all the unique software systems that, that we have in the city?
You want a list?
Yes, please.
I'll defer that to Devon, but if that, if that request is made, we can absolutely take care of it.
Do you want the, a, a list of the, you tell me again, was a list of all the systems?
All the unique software systems?
All unique system software?
Basically to look at, how many duplicate systems do we have and those kinds of things, you know, within all the departments and things like that?
All right, I'm putting this down and I'll get that, make sure that's taken care of, thank you.
Kim?
That'll actually, that's a come, that point actually, Kim brings up a, it's a very good point and it's actually something that Devon and I just recently discussed. I just went to, attended a cybersecurity summit in the city of Frankfurt, it was put on by the, by the Commonwealth and one thing that we approached was actually data strategy. So data strategy is something I actually just to Devon last week, it's something that I would see as very beneficial to the city. It, of course, is an investment and you would have to partner with someone to take the time to do that, but there is a need for it and that would definitely, that was one of the things that was addressed that they do cover in data strategy, because as you know, data is everything you touch, including emails all the way down to software, so that's a really good question and it is one that is currently on the radar, so I appreciate you bringing up the question.
Sure, sure. And Sarah, you mentioned that there were two new tools in the budget, what are those two tools?
So one is AudioEye and that's, yeah, audio is in like the audio that you would hear and then Eye and it's all one word. And the best example that I can give to you to go look at, if you want to look into it yourself, is if you go to civicplus.com, down at the bottom, you'll see an icon that looks like a human kind of doing a jumping jack, that is AudioEye. And what that does is it, with that click of that button, you're going to see a bunch of options pop up, big text, small text, different contrast, like inverted colors, and so that meets the needs of anyone who is, has a disability and they'll know what they need and so you just click that button and it instantly will apply to the entire website, the entire time they navigate it. You can un-click that button and it returns to its normal, normal appearance. The other tool, it was called Moncito and please forgive me if I do not pronounce this correctly, I think it's called Acquia Optimize now, and it's, it also proactively scans your website. The feature that's unique about Acquia that like AudioEye doesn't touch is AudioEye allows you to apply changes across the website. So for example, if someone changes a phone number, you would go into Acquia, put that number in and it's going to say apply all and it applies all, so that you don't have those one-off situations where the information is incorrect. You can do that with broken links, which is important because we have links on our website that go back to other websites and we obviously can't control what they do with their website. So Moncito will tell us, hey, flagged, this is broken, we need to fix it, and then when we do fix it, it'll again apply that link across the website so that the end user is getting the right experience, the correct experience every time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Sarah, great presentation, great job, keep up the hard work, because I worked with Darryl Jones who was IT many years ago when you're, you're taking on a mountainous project, so what's your current and, and upcoming projects right now?
So the current one that was on the list that you saw was the tenant migration, I'm sorry, I left my papers at the seat, but the tenant migration is the big one. We're finishing up also the critical infrastructure, that one is due to be completed this month, or well, June, I'm already into June in my head, sorry. But the critical infrastructure replacement followed by the tenant migration project and then ultimately I, I think we're looking at moving back into City Hall would be my next large-scale project. So that's kind, trying to leave room for that, so. Trying to leave room, like make sure that there's space available, so I think that would be the next anticipated. And we're trying to hold off on like kind of, unless it is urgent, making sure that we have a timeframe there to prioritize that.
Okay. Thank you, great job.
Okay, Mr. Hampton?
Yeah, Sarah, again, thank, thank you. My question may be more geared to Stacy on, what I like to, if we could, is the, the IT services are under the like to, if we could, is the IT services are under the professional services, correct? In the budget for general government?
Stacy, come on up. Okay, Stacy?
Most of it's under computer hardware software. And I can get that under the general government, but I'll get that breakdown. I know I had given it to Finance Committee previously. I don't have it with me today, but I can get that breakdown.
I think it'd be good for the whole, for the council as a whole, to see what our total IT cost is.
Yes.
You know, with net gain, and I believe forty-six solutions, and just everything.
And I can pull that together, because there are certain pieces that are obviously across departments. So, I can pull that together and give that out.
Mayor, do I need to send an email to you with that?
Yes, please do.
Okay.
Just to remind me, and I will make sure that's taken care of.
All right.
I'm writing it down, too, to make sure.
Thank you, Stacy.
From Mr. Councilman Hampton. Yes, okay, you have a question?
Yeah, Sarah, thank you. Lots of work migrating into City Hall coming up, I'm sure. Maybe wherever they went.
They sat over. Well, they're split right now, but...
Y'all coming back up?
Are any of the technology tools that you're using AI-driven now, or how is that being handled?
I'm actually gonna speak to that first. We currently, there may be some, there is some automation within their programs. However, recently passed a state bill that Emily forwarded on to me, is that this Commonwealth is looking to create legislation that will govern what we can and cannot do with AI as a local government agency. The, in the cybersecurity summit that I just attended, that was actually a large talking point. There is a lot, AI is fun, and it's exciting, and it's on the forefront, and it's gonna be here. But there's a lot of caution to the wind that has to be governed there. So, currently, other than like automated processes, which are more scheduled processes, and like automated crawls that are programs that you deploy in your network, I would not say that we're currently using...
I would say the extent of AI we're using for the city of Georgetown is primarily just categorization for the tickets. So, you say, "I have an email ticket." Automation just puts it, "This is an email issue." So, it's not reading user data or anything like that. We don't read any user data or anything like that either. It's purely just, basically how we build the statistics. Incident, this is proactive, this is reactive, that's all it's doing.
Okay. Thank you. Another question. Are we cooperating with the county at all in an interlocal way with our IT stuff?
Aside from our, like, our local, interlocal agencies, I don't, we don't connect IT at all.
Okay.
Just that we might interact with them. Like, our, a good example is the 911 center, because obviously, our IT infrastructure has to communicate to all the county agencies as well. And also, at the planning and zoning as well, because they, they talk to a couple outside of their, some of their software talks outside of their home base as well.
Okay, so there's no sharing of cost or anything with...
Yeah.
I mean, just the interlocal budget?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Another question, you know, a lot of unfortunate things are happening with crashes of entire city services. Do we, I guess, you're on 24-hour call?
Correct.
So, they, monitoring. So, see, yes, the night game is a 24-hour, helped us service. So, during the day, you kind of have like a larger-scale team, but then in the evening, and actually Gavin does oversee the overnight team, so I can let him speak to this if he wishes to, and he's welcome to. But yeah, they're great, they're on-call. For example, just yesterday, I took a 5:30 call that went into the seven o'clock hour. We were, something wasn't reporting correctly. We took a few troubleshooting steps. We said, "Let's wait, see if this helps." It didn't. So, then we went back at seven o'clock to restart the device and bring it back online. So, yes, they do have a full, fully-staffed team, which isn't always common. Like, some of our software providers are only in Monday through Friday, and/or they will only call in assistance if it is like a critical system failure, your system is down and not functioning. If, it could be something that's pretty inconvenient, and they're gonna say, "Call us on Monday." So, it's really nice to have them available to us 24 hours.
Yeah. And just to build off of, like, even holidays, you know, night game is 24/7, 365. So, if you called in, you know, it doesn't matter if it was just, you have a phone issue or email issue, we're still gonna assist, all the way to, you know, an outage or potentially affecting multiple sites, right? Even if you need advanced assistance, we do have on-call engineers, such as Tyler and myself, that can get involved if needed. So, you always have the support you need at the level you need it.
What about our water company? Are you involved at all with IT, with the water, Water Board, or Water Company?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions?
One more.
Okay.
Very quick. What is your confidence level of protecting the city against ransomware?
I would say 100%. Like, I have no doubt. We've implemented systems, especially over the course of these two years, that further strengthen the already-existing security policies that the city, or the city had. So, we have pretty much live monitoring of all critical infrastructure. So, if something bad gets in, we'll know what device it was, what time it was, and it'll automatically clean it up and isolate it before it even has the ability to affect the city.
And the most recent event was yesterday. I got, I got a notification, I got a notification, it was, again, addressed, cleared, all before this morning, when we, we had our weekly today. So, but like, they're like, "Up, yep, closed yesterday, it's all fine." But it's one of those, it's a proactive, like, it flags it before it's actually seeing its way through. But yeah, our most recent alert was yesterday.
That's correct. And then it builds on, you know, the priority that we need, so we can pull up for reports for, obviously, historical reasons. And then also, when we read it, we do have backups of, you know, all the infrastructure for the city. So, the risk of something happening is minimal, and we've taken the steps to get it as low as possible.
Any other, excuse me, any other questions? First of all, Sarah and Kim and...
Gavin, Tyler, and then you know, Kim.
All you computer wizards, thank you all so much for making our life a little bit easier and simpler, because I'll tell you, most of us are not tech-savvy, and that I'm glad to see that we have somebody, and first of all, that if something was to happen, we can go to that person, and that person will keep everybody accountable, because that's what we will want to happen for this city. And again, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Item C, which is the update for the Kentucky Product Initiative, KPDI grant funding, and I'm gonna turn it over to that Devin, talk more about this.
I know Jack Connor, the field expert's here as well, so if there are any other specific questions, he can get into that. This is just an update. Action will be requested at the next council meeting in the form of a resolution. But some of you will recall that late last year, the council authorized an additional $100,000 in matching funds for another KPDI application. We were granted that first round of $1.5 million, matched city, county, and Scott United at a half a million each. So, that $3 million pot was the project budget. Jack put together an application for additional funding for Phase Three, and it looks like that's going to be successful. It has not passed through the KEDFA board yet, because additional local actions required. But that action would just be the council affirming its contribution of $100,000, and agreeing to be the quote-unquote beneficiary of that funding. The county would be the grantee, the city would be the beneficiary of the funds, and the matching contributions are $100,000 city, $100,000 county, and I think roughly $47,000 and change from Scott United for KPDI funds just south of $1 million. So, pretty significant to add to that budget. It's gonna be very exciting. We've actually ended up pulling back on the bid process, because we can adjust the scope of, the scope of the project, and the engineering folks can kind of expand it, because we have the funding to do it. So, that'll be coming to all next meeting. The reason it's not here tonight for approval is just the cadence of those approvals. The county will not approve its resolution to be the grantee until, I think it's June 13th meeting. So, we wanted to give you the information ahead of time, knowing that you'll be asked to approve your beneficiary resolution before the grantee. Feels a little bit clunky, but just putting you all on notice that that's gonna be coming. It's really exciting. And then the KEDFA board will have to approve this, and ultimately, it'll come to, come to reality at that point. So, that will come to all at the next meeting. If you have questions about the project, the scope of it, the goals, I would defer those to Jack, but just process-wise, that's where we are.
So, when, Captain, June meeting?
I think June 16th? Yes.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six, sorry.
We're both those issues.
Yes.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Devin. Item number seven, council committee reports. The only report we should have is finance?
Thank you, Mayor. We held a finance committee meeting on May 19th, 2025. All, all members of the committee were present, including the mayor's staff. We approved the minutes from the May 5th, 2025 meeting unanimously. Item three, the, we discussed the 2024-25 budget amendment, number three, which will be discussed tonight. It includes fire and police department, workers' comp, insurance changes, vehicle maintenance, and pre-approved transactions. And we, also, there are some carryforward that is included in that, included in that discussion. As far as the 2025-26 budget discussion, we talked about the agency appropriations, and I believe a, the sheet was handed out to you prior to the meeting tonight. You can look at that. The committee expressed support for mayor's proposed allocations. As far as updates, Finance Director Clark provided an update on balances, fleet, vehicles, and adjustments to new staff members, budgeted for planning and zoning. The, and also, we discussed the security system for City Hall. Under the, we talked about the gas and electric franchise discussion. The city currently holds franchise agreements with electric companies that provide service in Georgetown. This franchise agreement will be up for renewal in 2027. There's currently no agreement in place for a gas franchise. As a agreement in which Columbia Gas has expired with no request to renew, this franchise will need to be rebid. The current electric franchise fee is 1.75%, and there has historically not been a franchise fee for gas services. The committee, we did ask that rate data be collected from other cities. Under general discussion, CD Attorney Buttram reported that staff will be meeting with outside council this week to discuss status development, impact fee, research, and drafting. Committee members also expressed, asked about annexation and the timing presented, presenting them to the council, and that we also will be talking more about quarterly updates from planning and zoning staff were suggested. Committee member Lesby Mitchell inquired about a budget allocation for council member training, and CEO Golden confirmed that the funding for electric official training incentives will be included in the budget. And with that, we adjourned at 8:54 AM.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next is item A, excuse me, item eight, which is the first rush reading for the, first reading of the budget amendment ordinance for the year 2024-25. And the sponsors are Tammy Lesby Mitchell and Greg Hampton. Take it away, Stacy.
Good evening. We always do a final budget amendment in June, just to catch up any cleanup items. We'll go through those changes right now, even though you have a memo in your packet outlining those as well. The new requests do not have any net decrease to our budget. The workers' comp budgets for both police and fire were too high, so we're showing a reduction of that. But there were some line items to clean up. The insurance casualty and liability was higher than expected, so we're just cleaning that line item up. Both departments, even though we asked for an adjustment in the mid-year amendment, still need additional funds for vehicle maintenance. We think we've tackled what they need in the new budget, so, and of course, hopefully, some of the new fire engines coming in will also help alleviate a lot of that maintenance that's going on in the fire department right now. Just double-checking, we cleaned up telephone computer lines, and then the police request, excuse me, requested additions for training and travel to finish out the year as they register for some, for some trainings and things coming up. And fire department needed a little bit extra in their professional services budget to cover physicals. Ended up being a little bit more than they expected. The reduced carryforward items, one of the things we've been talking about when I presented the budget for next year, was that there were some items included in this year's budget that were gonna be carried forward to next year. So, the items under reduced carryforward items, two, technology projects at a total of $60,000. Phase one of the Main Street brick sidewalk rehab at $120,000. We're still finishing the design of that. So, next year's budget includes both phases of repairing the brick sidewalk. The grant match for the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the Boston Community Park Playground Equipment, just had some delays on that, so we haven't paid for the equipment yet, so we haven't had to put our match forward. We are working through some things on the Marshall Park bathrooms, some additional design work that needed to be done, so wanting to carry forward that money to next year's budget, and it is already included in the budget you'll have first reading on tonight. And then, the environmental services carryforward items, which includes the Broadway Clayton Stormwater Channel and the Stormwater Utility Fee, Phase Two. Those were some things that we have budgeted for this year that are being deferred to next year's budget and are included in the mayor's proposed budget. So, I just wanted to show those as a reduction, because they will not be reducing our fund balance this year, just so we could see a little more accurately how we expect this budget year to be. And then the previously approved transactions at the last meeting, the city clerks' tax software, we had budgeted about $15,000 for that this year, and obviously, it was a little bit higher than that. So, that's the additional $20,000. And then the police camera and access control system that you approved. Again, we had budgeted about $28,000 for that, but then they went back and redid a couple of things and signed, doing that five-year agreement on that. So, the $76,000 is to finish that out, because we actually expect that project to be finished probably by the middle of June or so, I believe. So, those are the general fund items. The grant fund, we accepted the KYTC County-City Bridge Improvement Program. So, I pulled that in to show that acceptance. And then we already talked about the two Environmental Services Fund projects. So, any questions on the budget amendment? Just cleanup items at the end of the year, just to take care of a few things.
If no questions, at this time, Madam Clerk, would you read first reading?
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025. Summary, general fund. Prior year revenues are decreased by $1,351,774. General government expenses are decreased by $60,000. City clerk expenses are increased by $20,950. Police expenses are increased by $53,577. Fire expenses are decreased by $4,836. City engineer expenses are decreased by $120,000. Interlocal expenses are decreased by $533,715. Transfer to other funds are decreased by $707,750. Grant Fund, state grant revenue has increased by $342,010. Capital expenses are increased by $342,010. Environmental Services Fund, transfer from other funds are decreased by $707,750. Stormwater expenses are decreased by $707,750. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage of publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in City Clerk's Office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky 434, www georgetown ky.gov. Holy introducing the rev for the first time, May 28, 2025.
Thank you. Next is item B, first reading of the budget ordinance for the year 25-2025-2026. The sponsors are Tammy Lesby Mitchell and Greg Hampton.
As noted in your packet, there's a memo outlining a few changes that happened since the presentation a couple of weeks ago. And as Councilmember Hampton touched on it, a few of those, but I'll go through those again. So, originally, the general fund was using $1,531,781 of prior year revenues to balance the budget. With these changes, that amount has changed to $1,645,962. As mentioned, the council training incentive, $500 per council member that you would be eligible to earn in training incentives, plus any payroll taxes that would be related to that, if it's paid through payroll, yes.
Question on that. What type of training is this? I know the county gets incentives for their training, but they're put on by PICO or the state.
So, you all will have to adopt an ordinance establishing the program. We've been in touch with KLC. They've got model ordinances for this, but ultimately, there are some places where you all can kind of define that. It's up to $500, but they'll administer the program for you and track the training. But there are trainings that you could be eligible for outside of KLC, but the bulk of it would be through their city officials' Training Academy programs.
Do other cities do this?
Yes, quite a few, yeah.
Who do you have, do you know of one or two that...
We can pull, pull those names and provide it to you all. The bill was passed in 20, I don't know how old it is. Council talked about this, I think, back in 2017, 18, and it never really got legs or too much interest. But I think legislation's been around eight to 10 years now, providing for it. But we can get some sample cities that participate in it. And I know specifically, the previous mayor over in, for sales, who now works for KLC, he's a huge proponent. He's their, I think, member education or member relations person, and he's a huge proponent of it, and thinks it's a great opportunity to, you know, provide that, that path for elected officials. In many cases, specifically, those who have day jobs and, you know, might not have the time to incentivize them to go take the time to do that training. But we can pull some of those cities.
Okay, cool. All right.
All right. All right.
The next thing on the police department, we had two changes, just adding those last two officers that had been added via ordinance that had gotten overlooked, but also our retired rehireds are not subject to retirement, and so those evened out to about a reduction of $79,111 for those two changes in the police department. Vehicle leases, after reviewing the vehicle leases from Enterprise, police asked them to update their payment schedule. They do anticipate the process of when those vehicles come in to be earlier than what Enterprise had projected, and the vendor that does all of the outfit with the lights and the graphics said, if these come in in July, it's not going to be a large delay like it was last year. They're not going to sit on the lot for four or five months like they did last year. We'll be able to turn them around. So based on that, they asked them to kind of move up the timing of when those would be delivered to us. We do not make payments on any vehicle until it's delivered to us, so if it sits at the vendor for five months waiting on outfit, we're not paying for it. We don't pay for it till it gets here. So we added that. As mentioned, planning and zoning, after the mayor and Judge Covington spoke with the director, there was a reduction of one staff member. They had requested four additional staff members. They reduced that after discussion with the mayor and judge, reduced that by one, so it's a $30,368 reduction each for each entity. As mentioned with the agency appropriations, you have the list. We had put the placeholder of $300,000 in when we initially presented the budget. After going through and the mayor making his final recommendations, we added a $22,300 to that. That is still under the $400,000 that the policy allows. The Transfer to Capital Projects Fund due to the City Hall Camera Access Control System, the -- all of the wiring and infrastructure for any of that camera system is already built into the construction contract, but the purchase of the cameras and any monitoring services themselves are not part of that, so kind of piggybacking off what police did with using cooperative purchasing, we could get the same camera system as then. Police would be able to monitor cameras at City Hall as well. It would all be connected, so it was asked that we put that in. And then Dispatch, we gave them -- or they have requested $15,000 for the same type of certification incentives that police and fire are getting. They have the same levels that they can work through as dispatchers, and then just again, adjustment on their vehicle leases once they'd had a chance to review that budget from Enterprise. They will be -- the current police lieutenant vehicle will be going back to the police department with the lieutenant, so they need a vehicle for the coordinator who goes out and does tower site visits, needs to be able to go off-road and some things, so.
So that hasn't -- this hasn't been reflected into this document?
Yes, all of that should be reflected in the new department. This was in the packet. Yes.
Oh, so what -- okay, this is the old one.
Yes, the packet had a new copy, so let me get you a new copy if you want.
Got it.
So those are all of the changes.
Can you explain one more time so I can understand and understand? How is the new -- the payment of the new City Hall in the budget? How's it reflected in the budget?
It is reflected as a carryforward in the Capital Projects Fund. So let me find the page number so I can tell you. I know you don't have the new one, but I'll give you mine before we leave tonight. So it'll be on page 45. You will see a carryforward of $5.1 million on page 45. In the far-right column, that is the carryforward balance of that project. We made a transfer at the end of June 30, '24 for the full $10 million from General Fund to Capital Projects Fund, so that project -- that transfer was already made to that, so at this point, it's carryover money in the Capital Projects Fund. And so that is shown as a $5.1 million carryover.
Are there any other questions? Madam Clerk, if you read it.
An ordinance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal period July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operating of city government. Summary, Section One, adopts by incorporated exhibit the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, as follows. Governmental Funds, prior year revenues, $10,692,459. Revenues, municipal taxation, $4,4,450. Licenses and permits, $37,917,000. Franchise fees, $2274,000. Funds and forfeitures, $87,053. Intergovernmental revenues, $16,254,847. Charges for service, $1846,714. Other revenue, $515,000. Other financing sources, transfers, $6,600,356. Total city revenues, $69,499,420. Expenditures, general government, $3,113,028. City council, $210,593. City clerk, $389,675. Police, $16,248,336. Public works, $5,425,205. Fire, $11,967,764. Code enforcement, $548,453. Building inspection, $916,031. Dispatch telecommunications, $4239,949. Utilities, $956,435. Community services, $822,082. Inter-local, $10,256,101. Self-insured medical plan expenses, $4892,356. Capital outlay, $17,025,411. Debt service, $1116,855. Transfers to other funds, $263,605. Total city expenditures, $80,191,879. Proprietary funds, revenues, $2838,000. Sanitation, I'm sorry, sanitation, $2838,000. Cemetery, $246,000. Intergovernmental revenue, $256,654. Are you sure? Yeah. Other funding sources, transfers, $1,713,605. Total proprietary revenues, $560,259. Expenditures, sanitation, $2838,000. Stormwater, $1,461,951. Cemetery, $760,308. Total proprietary expenditures, $560,259. Section Two, authorizes the mayor, except as provided in the Georgetown Purchasing Policy adopted in Municipal Order 11028 and amended in Municipal Order 202217 to enter into any contracts or agreements necessary to fulfill the operation of city government within the allocations listed in this ordinance. Section Three provides that if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such impermeity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section Four provides that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, this ordinance are hereby repealed. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky gov. Public introduction and review for the first time, May 28, 2025.
Thank you.
May I add one more question?
It's on City Hall over there. Okay, so the furniture, the IT and all that, is that in the budget? Is that? So there is the contingency balance, which I believe is a little over $500,000 at the last change order, not sure that we've approved. That is where we're currently planning for furniture and fixtures to come out of. So there were just a couple, and all of the IT infrastructure is built into the construction contract. It was just, like I said, the purchasing of the cameras and the professional services that go along with monitoring, security cameras, and then I think potentially audiovisual equipment would be the only other thing. We can use our cooperative purchasing to get better deals on that equip. That was what was not included.
Okay, so they think that's enough money to cover that for turnkey, for the architectures thing? They -- that's enough money to be a turnkey?
For, I think -- I'm going to jump in.
Yeah, so the FFNE, that contingency FFNE budget, I don't think necessarily contemplated the audiovisual and the security system, so that's being budgeted outside of the project budget, but the bones for all those things to be implemented are there. We thought we were going to need to go back out for an RFP like we did when we procured Bates, but ultimately, that Verkata security solution at the police department they all approved can talk with City Hall, so knowing that that ballpark amount was there, we went ahead and included it so that we can have that vendor onsite working. I actually think Sarah coordinated the meeting with them today to do a walkthrough and make sure that everybody was jiving on the same page. Same thing on the AV, all the infrastructure will be there, but the actual number of cameras that will have to be purchased and installed, and then how we stream.
But all that's included in the budget at this point?
That part, we haven't scoped yet, but the security one, now that we scoped it at PD, we said, give us an idea of what it would cost at City Hall, and we said, let's go ahead and include that on the front end so everybody's aware of it. So that is something that, depending on what the scope of it is, I mean, maybe we will have enough contingency FFNE, but that was never contemplated as part of the.
Do we have a ballpark idea what that might end up costing?
We don't, but we need to get some -- unfortunately, we need to get somebody onsite to scope it, and it's one of those projects that if it's not big enough, you have a hard time getting people in to scope it if they're not 100% sure they'll get the work, so we're still working on that. So we'll bring an update on that, but figured since we actually have a ballpark number on the security solution, let's go ahead and include it in the budget and be prepared for that.
Okay.
But as we scope that, I'll get you all updates.
And just, obviously, anything that would be outside of that construction contract, not under Codel's purview, would be brought to council for individual approval, so even though.
We don't know at this point in time, make sure I'm up to date, paying cash or bonding?
Paying cash, I mean, at least unless council changes their mind. We had a vote in November, and that vote was to pay with cash, so unless something changes on your all's end, it would be cash.
Okay, that's in November. Okay, great.
Yes, go ahead.
Just point of information, we, Finance Committee and Council, made some good decisions for investing over the past couple of years. Where -- is that under other revenue or other financing sources? Where is the interest reflected that we've made?
Yes, it's -- it is in the other revenue, and you can see the detail on page -- let's see, sorry. There it is, it's on page three of the -- and it is at $500,000, which is less than what we've had, just because have received word from our local financial institution, they expect a couple more quarter percent, so we were conservative with that. However, we will keep, once the budget's passed and once City Hall's finished and we've paid out that last $5 million, we will regroup, and so it was a conservative estimate. We didn't want to overestimate if we didn't have a significant amount of funds to invest or if the interest rates have gone down, so we've been able to keep that $20 million CD a lot longer than we anticipated, just because of some of the delays, so -- but obviously, that will have to get cashed out here soon, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All righty. If no other questions, okay, thank you, Stacy, as always. Thank you, Devin, for your assistance in that. Item number nine, I'm going to bring up Chase with GMW SS, and he's going to talk about a temporary easement, a question by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can do Item A and Item C, those are both kind of items for your consideration, then come back and finish with Item B. That is an informational update for council. So starting with A, as Mayor said, this is temporary easement between Georgetown Municipal KYTC. They contacted us about a problem -- not a problem, a project they're working on in Stampin' Ground along KY 227 Main Street, Stampin' Ground Road, and they requested this temporary easement. We looked at their scope of work. It's, I think they're extending a culvert, doing some edge of pavement work. Doesn't restrict access for us at all. It does not impede us from operating our pump station there, so we don't see any issue with this. We feel like we need to work with KYTC as they're always good to work with for our project, so seeking your approval of the temporary easement and the agreement and bringing it to you because this, you all, the city is a part to this as the owner of the utility, so historically, the city's on most, if not all, of our easements.
Motion, Mayor.
All right, okay, y'all beat me to the punch here. I'll get a little quick with this, all right? So motion is made by Mr. Stone, second made by Mr. Minky. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion to apprени the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, the temporary easement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Item C, we will now talk about is the South Sewer Extension Performance Bond Update.
Okay, this is more of an administrative or housekeeping request on the project. This is a no-cost change order. Our general contractor, Howell, they've been maintaining, per our contract, a performance bond since 2021 equal to the contract amount. They currently, the contract amount from the original that the payment bond is based on, they've done, they've completed work from starting at $19.2 million, and they have just under $640,000 work remaining. That is on pavement restoration of Lau Road, which I'm hoping will start next week, and then some minor updates on the Elizabeth Street Pump Station, but that work is totaled at, I think it's $639,000 of change. The actual sewer infrastructure, it's been in place for over 18 months, so we feel like that majority of that contract is finished and the work has been performed accurately. They've requested, till they close out the remaining work, that we can reduce that performance bond. There's a cost to holding that, carrying at that, so what we proposed was, you've got roughly $640,000 left, times two on that, and that's what we will propose to the council and to the board, bringing this performance bond down. So that's our proposal. We're proposing that through Change Order Number Seven, and again, this is not, this doesn't change schedule, this doesn't change monetary amount of the contract.
I have a motion.
Motion, second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Minky, second made by Ms. Sampson. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion for South Sewer Extension Performance Bond Update, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Now to Item B, the 2024-25 Financial Review and Rate Analysis Informational Update.
Okay, this is just, as Mayor said, informational update related to our rate structure, and just going back a little bit, fall was November, December of 2022, and then January, February, March of 2023, we presented and implemented an update to our rate structure. During that discussion, one of the commitments I made is we would bring back to the City Council a more frequent review or audit, if you will, of our rate structure to make sure it's performing properly. So this analysis that has been completed that we're going to walk you through tonight, this is in addition to our monthly financial reports to the board. This is in addition to our annual budget process. This is in addition to our annual financial audit. So this is just another layer of protection that requested by council. We said we'd do this. We're here tonight to make sure that we're making good on that and giving you the information that you want. So last December, we brought back in Brown Thornton and his team of NuGen, and they started their analysis. They're performing that analysis based on our FY24 actual revenue and expenses, our operational capital plan against what we had forecasted within our rate model. So this is a very important step that we do right before because next meeting, we will bring our FY26 budget for your consideration. So let me give you the preview before Brown comes up to walk you through the analysis. We're not recommending any further increase. We're not recommending any change up or down to our current rate structure. He's going to talk about, remind everybody, it's a six-year step rate structure. There has been some confusion that this is, with what was on the agenda tonight, that this was another request for an increase. It is not. This is just the analysis to show that the FY23 rate structure, as memorialized in the water and sewer ordinance, is working as performed. It's putting the utility in a strong financial position that we can continue to provide service, so there's no action here. This is a chance for you all to see the work we've done. Brown's going to give you the technical analysis, but just give you the chance to ask questions about how we've been performing financially before we bring you a budget next meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brown. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brown.
It's good to be here. For those that were here two years ago, you know that this 2023 rate plan was a heavy lift. It was a journey, a lot of work, both sides, and it was truly appreciated. What's on the screen now is just a, just a refresher of what the 2023 six-year rate plan looked like. What we did was kind of a stress test, looking at the last two years of actual operating for revenue, your expenses, debt service, margin for capital improvements, et cetera. Next slide. This, this is just like a cost stack and then shows how it's, shows how it's being funded for capital expenditures. Each, each stacked bar there is, are the capital expenditures that particular year. And then the colored bands are the sources of funds. So the sources of funds include grants and then your re, reimbursement from Toyota Motor Company, then your capital that's funded through new debt. In this case, you've got some bond anticipation notes that are out there standing. And the plan is to put permanent financing in place this fall, sometime in the fourth quarter. That's, that's maybe, maybe in the first quarter next year, but the, the portion that's funded through new debt is that lighter blue color. And then the portion funded through revenues is the green bar. In total, those five years of capital improvements total about $52 million. So that's kind of the overall capital improvements plan along with the funding source for each year. Next slide. This is the focus on the revenues and then your operating expenses. So the, the bars are the annual revenues generated through rates. Then the red line is the operating costs. The difference between the top of the bar and the red line, that's your operating margin. Those funds are used for debt service, debt service coverage, capital improvements that are funded through rates, and any reserves or working capital that's required. That's where, there's no, there's no, you don't have any bondholders, I mean, you don't have any shareholders to pay. It's not profit, it's margin that's reinvested in your system. Next slide. Looking at that operating margin forecast, the dotted green line, remember, that's the difference between revenues and, and operating expenses. So that's your margin. Underneath that is the annual projected debt service. Now for this particular run, recognizing that you'll put financing in place sometime, maybe fourth quarter this year, first quarter next year, you note that the debt service and, and the coverage allowance, it actually goes down in 2026 and then back up to a more of a flat level. What that reflects is for 2026, the first year or first period is interest only. Okay, so that's, that's why it, it comes down. But the, again, that operating margin is used for the debt servicing coverage and anything that's remaining, the difference between the dotted green line and the top of the bar, any, any of those funding that's generated annually is available for additional capital, borrowing less in the future, things of that nature. So again, any, any amount of margin that's not used for debt service and coverage is used for capital, putting back in the system. Last slide. What does it mean for the customers? These, this is a stack of the combined water and sewer bill. The water is shown in blue, sewer, annual, the monthly bill is shown in gray, and it's assumed for an average 2,000 gallon customer. So the good news is that the hard part's over. The four, five, six dollar a month increases, we're done with that. The, the last of the larger increase was done in March. And if you look for 2006, '07, and '08, notice it's, you're down to, you know, 250 to 280 a month. So again, the hard part's over. The rest of it's not easy, but it's easier. The, based on our, you know, stress test and analysis of the actual performance financially, we recommend, again, no change in your, in your rate plan. Things are performing as expected, which is always a good thing. You know, it's, it's the old plan, do, check, act. So we made a plan, we're checking it, it looks like it's okay, no adjustments. That's the MO going forward. And we'll say that, again, any, any questions you have with this material or what was in the memo?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Minky.
So in the, the rates that are out there now through fiscal '28, does that take into account wastewater treatment plant number two upgrades in the future?
It takes into account that we're already putting money into a sinking fund for design, planning and design. We also have, we also have funding that we applied through the state legislature last year that Senator Thayer helped us secure. And part of that $7 million grant is specifically allocated for wastewater treatment plant number two, when it comes around that, that we need to do a major capital project for expansion there. I don't have a crystal ball for, that will be, that will be driven by capacity requests. I don't know when that will be, but we are planning and that we are putting money away every month that goes into a sinking fund specifically for that project. We've already applied for the first piece of funding for that project. We'll continue to do so as we go. Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, I have a question for Chase.
Yes, Chase.
You and I talked on the phone actually earlier today, and one of the things with the water bill, it's nice to see the next three years, it'll only be less than $3 to go up for people because we've gotten phone, or at least I have, gotten phone calls that people feel like their bill has dramatically gone up. And it's kind of hard to explain it, and as I told you on the phone, I'm not so sure I understand all the increases and how they work on the bills. But your bill has the water company bill on there, sanitation on there, 911, plus some other taxes and fees that are on there. So if they all go up, it gets blamed on the water company, of course, because they're on there.
I think that's part of it. I, I think that part of it is, you know, we, we had some unfortunate events. I, I don't like to push what happened with our project onto other charges that are on our bill. But I do think one of the, the struggles this time of year is that we bill for solid waste and that goes, that has its escalator, I believe, February of each year. Then our step to increase hits March 1st of each year. So by May, April, May, people are seeing that in their bills, and it is an adjustment, absolutely. But that's, unfortunately, that's how those are, how those hit the calendar. But on our bill, you have water, sewer, 911 fee, solid waste garbage for Republic. You also have the taxes on those items for sales and school and KRAV, Kentucky River Authority. And then there's some, depending on the type of customer, there can be other additional, whether you have sprinkler charges, things like that, you can get into even more. But those are, those, those first five are on every single bill if you're in those service areas for those. And so yes, by April, May, you're seeing, you're seeing an increase.
Yeah, I need to, I need to understand, I need to understand for my constituents, I need to start understanding their water bill better.
Sure.
Myself, and when these fees pop in and what these rates are on these fees and when they're going to change so I can help explain that better to consumers that question me on it.
As, as we talked about, I will work on some educational materials, some outreach materials that can provide. It, it won't, doesn't make the medicine go down any easier, doesn't make the bill any less, but at least maybe it's a little bit more understandable about what all services that you are paying for that you're receiving benefit from.
And I had asked you this in an email, the 2,000, it's always been based on the 2,000 gallons.
As far back as I've been able to trace so far.
That's nothing, nothing there has changed.
There's nothing new there. And another question that we've had come up a lot, I've sent the City Council some, some information on, is a minimum bill type structure. And I'm sure there's somebody out there that doesn't do a minimum bill structure. I don't know who that utility is. Most, I've not ever heard of a water sewer utility that doesn't base their, their rate structure on a minimum use bill.
Okay. Mayor, I'll, I will send you an email on this, but so I can, so I can grasp our bills completely to help others. I'd like to get when our rates, like Chase said, that the sanitation changes here, 911, I'd like to get that, so that schedule of, just like what they did today, tonight, is when this is going to change, to get that on all the things that are on the water bill, if we could.
So you're, you asking for the rating, when those rate decreases are going to occur?
Like our sanitation and what it's going to be, the schedule, just like they've got for the next X amount of years that we're in contract with, here we're in contract with. So that, because there's a, we got, I got a lot of phone, I don't know if anybody else did, but I got a lot of phone calls the first of this month, asking about, and I really couldn't explain as well as I should have been able to.
I will get you some information that hopefully you're able to walk your constituents through that. Again, won't make the, the medicine go down any easier, but hopefully a better explanation, and they can always come, come see us, customer service, or you can have them come see me.
But if there's some understanding to it, it does help.
I think so.
Mayor, have a question for Chase.
Yes, go ahead.
For those on council who were here when all of this rate structure was going down, I'm thrilled that the rate structure is accurate and I appreciate the update showing that it's accurate and that the rate structure is not deviated. And how do we stand still with other entities in the region with our rate structure?
Okay, I've put some information together for you, and I'll just say, prior to 20, end of 2022, I always presented where we, our standing was within the Bluegrass Ad Utility Districts, as well as some state studies that, that we are part of and we look at. It seemed like, I'll say back in 2022, 2023, those were not well received in that it just seemed like our customers thought that I was trying to say, we're doing all right, so nobody, nobody needs to look at that. That's not my intention. I just want to show what are people paying for these services? So we have tracked that, we still do. I always keep it at the back of my PowerPoint presentation in case somebody asks for it. So if we can scroll to the end, I'm happy to show you that. Again, but it's not something that I put in as, as part of what I want to talk about. This is here because you asked for it. So you can see with, I believe it's 20 utilities that we've looked at, we are just under the, the middle. So a combined, this is for a combined 2,000 gallon usage, a minimum bill. We are, for water and sewer, our customer would pay $41.50 for that portion of the bill, not factoring in 911, solid waste, but that is where we would pay. So for our minimum bill, we are kind of right at the middle of the pack with, within these peer cities. So of course, we'd like it to be lower, but the fact that we've taken on a 60-plus million dollar wastewater plant expansion, as well as a South Sewer Extension Project, just over $23 million in the past five years, and we're able to maintain this as a minimum bill and rate structure, I'm very proud of that.
Absolutely.
I'm very pleased at the, what I feel is value that we offer our customers.
Thank you.
Chase, you don't have, you don't have the slide for just, since so many people are on Kentucky American in the area, Kentucky American on water in Georgetown water, you don't have a slide just to compare that with?
I don't have that tonight, but I could get you that. So you'd like the breakdown between?
Just wa, on water, not sewer.
Water, only.
Uh huh, in Lexington and Georgetown.
Okay, I can work.
Kentucky American or Georgetown water, yeah.
I'm happy to work on that for you.
Excuse me, I'm writing this down so I can make sure. All right, any other questions? Chase, as always, thank you so much. Appreciate you always coming in and giving us the 401 on information that's much needed and hopefully that. Item number 10, Stacy, if you will come back up on the quarterly financial report.
Good evening. I just wanted to do our typical quarterly update, talk about our five top revenue accounts. First, payroll tax collections. As you can see, through March, for returns dated through March 31st, we had received 14.2 million, just over 14.2 million in our payroll tax collections. That is 74% of our budget, and we're about $560,000 ahead of last year. Usually that last quarter is a high one, so I do anticipate us to end a little farther ahead than that. And of course, you can see our KJRA incentive payments under that. Next, we have net profit tax collections. As you can see, we have received, and what this is, again, we'll talk about credits as I always do, currently with what has rolled forward in credits and what we've received additionally, it's about 8.8 million. We budgeted 3.2. However, I tried to do kind of a rough analysis on some information that I'm privy to, and I would expect that at the end of this year, unless something changes, there's probably going to be, again, between $5 and $6 million in credits owed back. So at the end of the year, we're probably going to be around that three and a half, three, three and a half mark, where we've kind of been lately. So just always keep that in mind. We don't know that out until we get to the audit in the fall, but when I get those numbers from Revenue Commission, from their auditors. But I do anticipate, based on just kind of my rough analysis myself, that we still have a large credit balance, that we will not be able to recognize the revenue this year. The insurance premium tax collections for, I'm sorry?
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
So of those credits, roughly how many, what percentage of those companies are asking for that back versus carry it?
Most, I don't have all of that data. I will say the bulk of it does not get requested in refund form. There are a few smaller refunds here and there that get requested, I'm sorry, credits that get requested to be refunded, but the larger credits seem to kind of just kind of carry forward. So again, that's something we're on the Revenue Commission side, but that's at least how it's gone the last five, six, seven plus years, is those large credit balances carry over and they don't ask for refunds.
And the Revenue Commission doesn't transfer those until you earn them correctly?
They transfer them to us as soon as they get the cash.
Oh, okay.
So Revenue Commission operates on a cash basis. We operate on a modified accrual basis. So I get the cash and then I have to show that. We did that a little bit differently. This year, there's a new account that I believe, it says tax liabilities or tax overpayments. In the past, we've reduced the receivable at the end of the year, but we will, going forward, show that broken out where you have the receivable and then you have the credits in a separate liability line item. So you'll be able to more clearly see the liabilities as related to the receivables.
Are we able to take interest on those?
I'm sorry?
Are we able to take interest on that?
It is part of our cash balance that we present to you all. So when I'm talking about interest income, we're typically talking about cash balance. So that is sitting in the bank in cash. So we are able to earn, to earn interest on those funds that have been transferred to us, so. The insurance premium tax collections, we have collected just over 4.1 million or 57% of our budget, and we are about $487,000 ahead of where we were this time last year. Property taxes, of course, for the time we get to this point in the year, there's just a few stragglers coming in, but we've already updated this in our mid-year amendment, but we've collected $2,742,000. Our mid-year amended revenue was $2,723,000. So we've collected 101% of our budget and about $132,000 more than last year at this point. And like I said, they'll be a little bit trickling in. The alcoholic beverage regulatory fee, as I continue to talk about, this revenue's kind of just stagnated, it's not increasing. It's, we've collected through the first three quarters, $1,045,000, and that's about 71% of our budget. Obviously, three quarters, we should be around 75%. That's why I've reduced the budget for this revenue in next year's upcoming budget to 1.4 million because it's kind of just. because it's kind of just stagnated.
Is there a reason why that might be that?
I know we had a distillery close sometime in the past 12 months. Beyond that, I'm not exactly sure. We haven't changed the regulatory fee. It's been the same since we adopted it in 2012, 2013. But after, I think right before I came here, so. And you have the line item report for your review. Obviously, if you have any questions about that, you can email them to the mayor and I'll go through those. And as mentioned, obviously, in the budget amendment, we, I believe, expect to end the year. I think it was around 7.1 million if all budgeted revenues and expenses were, you know, their targets. Any other questions?
Anybody got any questions? All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next is council discussion, old business backyard chicken. So yeah, so I'm going to kind of give you a little bit of an update, kind of give you a little word. Remember that this was a council initiative, it was brought to council. They was asked that, I think we had a draft ordinance brought before. And I wanted to kind of pull back a little bit on that to make sure that we're talking with the right people, that we include information from other stakeholders, whether it be planning zoning, health department, you know, code enforcement, police, animal control. So we accept those meetings with them. So we put a deadline on for more discussion, which will be the 30th. And after that time, we should hopefully have enough information to where Emily's still working with it on getting a draft together and hopefully in the near future bring something to this council with that. So that's what we're working with there. So that's all about chickens, all right? Next, the item B, anybody have one question about chickens? We move on to the develop impact fee. Greg alluded to a little bit, they talked a little bit about that. I mentioned that we're having a stakeholders meeting on June 5th at 3 o'clock up here. So again, that is taken from the information that's being gathered, that you all asked to gather on, and we're doing that. And the next step is to have that stakeholders meeting. And then from there, we'll hopefully have next steps from there and will be an update. So is there any questions, anybody on these two items here, A or B chickens or develop impact fee? Next, new business. Anybody got any new business? All righty. Then we move to item 12, council comments. All right, we're going to start now with Mr. Chris this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, a few days ago, we had some major weather in the area and fortunately, we weren't hit as bad as communities in southern Kentucky. So I think all of us would like to express our prayers for everyone affected by that, those horrible storms, especially in Somerset, London area. While all that was going on, I was kind of wondering what type of communication we have in place for our city residents who are perhaps a little bit more vulnerable, folks living in mobile homes, maybe even folks living in an apartment. I'm sure Mike already has in his, in that great report he presented to us a while ago with emergency services, there's probably a plan in place. But I'd like to encourage us to probably get that, that plan broadcast better to our more vulnerable populations in order for the next time this happens down the road, they would be able to know where they can shelter in place. Are there open schools, churches, types of buildings here in town that they would be able to go to?
From what I know is, I do know that like Scott County is one of those shelters that Mike puts out. He does put out through the Facebook and he shares it with us and then we share it on our platform to let everybody know what's being talked. But we'll continue to update that and see where we are.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Ms. Sampson.
Only thing I have is something to go off of what Michael started. The sirens that we have in town, I know, or I just recently learned this, they're not for the sirens when they go off, or really not for the people on the inside. It's for people that are outside to let them know. But do we have, even for the coverage, since the city's getting larger all the time, do we have enough sirens to take care of the city? I know where I'm at, which is Rockford Reserve, you can't hear, if you're inside the house, you cannot hear the sirens, they're very, unless you're really paying attention and awake and alert. And that's what happened down there. So many people were in their home asleep and when the tornado came through. So I was just curious as to that, but that's it.
I will check on that. So that you're talking about, do we have enough siren allotment to cover the city?
To cover the city area.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mickey.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item for me. Thank you for staffing the Business Park Authority. That's, that's a vital role that we have in being able to grow our economic base in, here in the community. So thanks for the diversity of the expertise. I think that's really, really critical as we look at these boards and things like that, that we have this diverse group of folks that bring the types of expertise that are necessary to move those forward. Since those are non-paid voluntary positions and it's a way for those folks to really give back to their community. So you've got a good slate that we approved tonight, so thank you for doing that.
All right, yeah, they are pretty good. I had a conversation with all of them, they all bring a different piece to it that I think is vital for that when you're talking about economic growth and so on. And they have a pretty good knowledge of all that and where it needs to be. So good, thank you. Yes, next, Ms. Habrick.
It's been an exciting time with graduations and we have a wonderful school system and what we have done to help them in the county as well with the school resource officers. I was in conversation with some of them over the past week in some of the leadership things we were doing at the elementary schools. And watching the graduate parade down Main Street is always an inspiring time. And Georgetown College graduation. And so I'm very thankful for what we have in all of our schools and school systems and the support we give.
It's always good to see some of those kids that you taught, say, say, Lord, we gonna make it, but he did. So, all right, that's good, I shouldn't have said that, that's okay.
I don't have anything, but I want to thank the mayor, Devin, and my code enforcement for helping me with a constituent that had an issue with mold and different things. I just appreciate y'all getting back so soon for me.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hampton.
Just one comment regarding the 25, 26 budget. You know, I've been working on the finance committee for three years now, been part of it and been on council for, you know, joining in my fifth year. This is probably one of the best budgets I think we've put forward so far. And really, you know, commend you and the staff on it and really look forward to putting this in place.
Thank you. All right, last but not least.
Thank you, sir. To echo off of what Willow was talking about, the school resource officers, it's come a long way. Because I remember a time when it was John Poland, then it was Jeb Warner, then it was me. And I covered the 15 schools by myself. So for the, to have one in every school, that's phenomenal. And I'm tickled to death to have them. They're all, they all held up their hands years ago going, keep the kids away from me. And I'm going, it's, you're missing out. And now they're all finding that out, but I'm tickled to death to have them. So I'm glad that they are continuing to find legacy in that tradition, so that's it.
I'm glad because I remember when I was Dean of students, you and I was pals a lot, so that's good. If there's no other business to go off of this council, this meeting stands adjourned.